On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Deshues County and the City Club of Central Oregon, welcome to the candidate forum for Ben Lepine School Board, Physicians Three and Five. Our candidate forums are conducted according to league guidelines and all candidates who have filed for office have been invited to participate. We thank the candidates who are participating tonight and appreciate the gravity of committing to run for office. Our moderator this evening is Joni Odden-Land of the Central Oregon Correspondent for OPB. Joni, would you like to begin?
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Joni Odden-Land and my pronouns are they/them. I'm OPB's Central Oregon Reporter and tonight's moderator for the Ben Lepine School Board Zones Three and Five Candidates Forum. Just for some background, seven community members make up the Ben Lepine Schools Board of Directors. Board members are elected community-wide, represent the entire district. However, they must reside in one of five zones or be elected at large. Voters elect board members for terms of four years. The school board has governance responsibilities in four areas: vision, accountability, policy, and advocacy. For this forum, we are hosting Ben Lepine Board Candidates for Zone Three, Cameron Fisher and Christopher Strenberg. For Zone Five, Sherry Greif and Amy Tatum. We will start off with one-minute opening statements followed by questions where each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer. At the end, each candidate will have two minutes for closing statements. And candidate order will be rotated during questions, so the person who goes first, second, third, fourth will change with each question. And I'll be sure to let you know how that changes with each question. So for the first pick, can we start with Cameron for your opening statement?
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to share a little bit about myself and why I'm running for school board. My name's Cameron Fisher. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a lifelong educator with over 28 years' experience. I currently teach at Oregon State University for the College of Education and College of Public Health and Human Sciences. I teach future teachers, school counselors, social workers, and nonprofit leaders. Prior to being at OSU, I worked in the field of special education for over 10 years as a teacher, educational behavioral consultant, and an educational assistant. I have a doctorate in educational leadership and a master's in education, and I've had certifications in special education and ESOL. I grew up in Oregon and I'm deeply rooted in the Oregon, Central Oregon, community, having lived here 19 years. I'm also an active community volunteer. I serve on multiple boards and committees here in Central Oregon. I'm also a mom of two teenagers who have been in Ben Lepine Schools since kindergarten. And I'm really excited about this opportunity, and I think it's going to be a really great fit for me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you're next.
Hello, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters of Deshues County for having me and putting this event on. My name is Christopher Strenberg. I'm a family man first and foremost. My daughters are both college-graduated, and I've been married for going on 15 years. Things don't always go as planned in life, and it's all about being prepared. We adopted my wife's younger sisters at the early ages, they're three and five, and raised them with this ideology. I currently work as an operation manager for a nationwide notary firm and also run day-to-day operations with a law firm kind of overseeing real estate as well. Education came to me late in life. I always preach it to my daughters. And it's hard to tell them to pursue what they want and go to college without being college-educated. So I went ahead, finished my BA in history, got my master's in history, and I'm currently working on a master's in education as well as my doctorate in history. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry, you're next.
Hi, my name is Sherry Greif, and Ben has been my home for approximately 30 years, a bit over 30 years. And during this time, I've worked with youth and families for about 20 years in different capacities. I volunteered with Cub Scouts and then Boy Scouts. I've been a 4-H leader. I've been a foster parent. I've worked in for Eastern Oregon Coordinated Care, the children's behavioral health side, for right about 14 years. And I am running for Ben Lepine School Board of Directors because I'd like to see our youth graduate and get a basic foundational education. So that's who I am and why I'm running.
Thank you. And Amy, yours?
Hi, my name is Amy Tatum. I am your current Zone Five representative, and I'm running for reelection. I'm running for reelection because I believe that schools and education is the foundation of democracy and future success in life. When I was growing up, I came from a family that we didn't have much, and my parents weren't high school graduates, and they did not emphasize the importance of education to me. And it was a second-grade teacher. I remember telling me I was gonna go to college someday. And I was able to go to UCLA for undergrad and Yale for graduate school. And I now serve our community, not only in my role as a school board member, but also as a family nurse practitioner working in primary care. I'm deeply committed to this community. This is the community where my husband was raised and where we chose to move back and raise our two children. And as a parent of two children in Ben Lepine Schools, I understand what our children are facing, what our educators are facing, and I'm here for the fight to improve educational outcomes for all people in our district.
Thank you. First question, we'll start off easy. Can you guys tell me why you're running for school board and what are your qualifications for the position? We'll start it with Amy for this one.
Yeah, so I'm running for reelection. You know, I've been on the board for the last four years. And one of the things I have definitely learned during my time as a board member is the importance of consistency and that it really takes a long time to actually understand the work of a board and the role of a board. A lot of people, I think, think school boards do things that we don't do and that we probably shouldn't do. You know, school boards are responsible for vision and setting up a plan of where we want our school to go, but it's under our superintendent. This is operationalized. You know, I'm running for reelection largely because honestly, my children asked me to. When it came time to make the decision, I was really torn because the last four years have not been an easy time to serve. But then I also realized that that's exactly why I belong here and why I want to keep doing this work. Because the work of a school board should not be overly political. The work of a school board should not be based on culture wars or on things shifting in political winds. The work of our school board needs to be focused on our students and their outcomes, not only in education, but also mental health. And I think our schools have a huge role to play in that. And with my background in primary care, I am ears on the ground, hearing every day what family members in our community are facing. I hear about the trauma. I hear about housing issues, about educational outcomes. And I understand that we need high-quality education in order for our long-term health of our community.
Thank you. Sherry, you as well. How, sorry, why are you running for school board and what are your qualifications?
Well, I'm running for school board because I believe in a really strong, basic foundation at an early age. And I also believe in parental rights. And that includes things such as being able to view curriculum easily and any opting in for different things such as behavioral health treatment and physical treatment. And so I believe in that. And my qualification, and that's why I'm running. And my qualifications, like I said, I've worked in children's behavioral health for about 15 years. And much of that, well, I actually helped build two different programs. And one of them was Systems of Care, which is a collaboration of schools, behavioral health, juvenile justice, and all things to do with youth and family together. And so we were able to collaborate. I also have written policies and procedures for at least two and more programs as a unit together with other people. So I have a lot of experience in policies and procedures and supervision as well.
Thank you. Christopher?
Thank you. First off, I'm running for change. Change that's much needed to the current board. Driving factor would be my niece. She's turning four. That's pretty much why we moved out to the area. We've been here before. We loved it, but to be close to family is vitally important. But she's just starting her education journey, and I want her to have every advantage that's possible. I've seen our current education system, the good and the bad. And hopefully, I can bring a different look to it. As far as qualifications go, I'm very well-educated. I'm working on, again, my second master's, this one in education. I've managed people, raised kids, been through school, and I believe is it quit me with everything that's needed to be a great addition to the board. There's a need for change in our school board, and high achievement takes place in the framework of high expectation is what I believe. And it is important to me that we keep education at the forefront of our decisions, and we come together to adequately prepare all students for their futures.
Thank you. Cameron?
I'm running because I believe I'm highly qualified for a position of board member. I feel like I have a lot to bring to the table from multiple angles. First and foremost, being a mom of two teenagers who have been in Ben Lepine Schools since Kinder and experiencing elementary, middle, and high school here in Ben Lepine Schools. Second, just again, going back to my introduction statement, is that having been an educator for 28 years, having that experience as being a teacher, not only in K-12, but also in higher education, I bring kind of a unique lens. And in addition to that, of K-12 and higher ed, also having experience in two particular areas of ESOL and special education, not only as a teacher, but also as a researcher. And then also just my deep connections here, having been here for 19 years in Central Oregon, and then also having grown up in Oregon, the, my community relationships. And so I've been involved in multiple committees and boards, including Human Rights and Equity Commission here in Bend, the Deshues County Behavioral Health Advisory Board, and then also at the state level, nonprofit that supports neurodivergent students throughout Oregon. So having multiple lenses to bring to the table, I think, can be really powerful and helpful at the board level.
Thanks. Next question, what are the largest issues facing the Ben Lepine School District right now in your view? We'll start with Chris for this one.
Thank you. So funding's pretty much obviously top on the list. We need a lot of specialized programs for our youth. And we need salaries to be just for our teachers and not only to bring those teachers in, but to keep them around and keep them focused on, obviously, the objectives at hand, which is education. We need more early education literacy programs. Unfortunately, our scores in Oregon are not good, and early literacy is just falling. So I believe that's one main thing that's needed. We need continued access to an education that is preparing all students to the future. We need more CTE programs, and with that, just working with the general community and building partnerships and just getting those out there and getting students, you know, in trades that are good for them and will set them up for the future. Behavior issues are up, and we just need consequences and accountability. Our teachers are feeling helpless with what they are going through, and we just need programs and staff that can help. Teachers aren't psychologists. They're not social workers. So just kind of stuff with, starts with the community and just getting, you know, the kids involved on stuff to keep them on track.
Thanks. Cameron?
Yes, I think there are lots of pressing needs right now, but a couple come to mind immediately for me. First, increasing student, family, and educator engagement and belonging. That we know that when students and their families and educators are engaged in a learning journey, that students succeed academically. They're more likely to attend school regularly and graduate on time. And I also very much believe part of that engagement piece is belonging, that all students deserve to feel safe, supported, and valued in their schools. The minute they enter those school doors, they need to be able to bring their whole self, and it's absolutely essential for high-quality learning. And then also, of course, very pressing is the cost of living in Central Oregon. So not only retaining our high-quality teachers that we have, but being able to recruit is certainly very challenging. And so I think there's going to be more and more innovative solutions on how to manage that. But one, with regard to our educators now, making sure to support them more with regard to student behavioral issues, their own mental health, housing resources, so they can continue to be able to live in Central Oregon, and then getting more innovative with ideas for solutions on how to recruit. And I think one great opportunity is the Grow Your Own idea. And so really tapping into our local talents and helping to support them to become educators in the district.
Thanks. Sherry?
So I've spoken to many people in the community, youth and teachers and parents. And we have teachers that are leaving, a lot of them. We have youth that are leaving too. Parents are pulling children out of school. I think about 1,700 at this point. I'm hearing the classrooms are very chaotic. And who could teach and who could learn when things are very chaotic? And so I do think accountability back in the classroom for behaviors needs to happen. And I do believe that goes back to policy, maybe curriculum that's been newly introduced. And so those are some big issues. Also, I'm hearing from a lot of teenage youth that they are not graduating with the independent living skills that they need, such as how do I find an apartment? How do I fill out an application? And if the basic core foundations are taught very well and you have reading and comprehension, then we will be able to fill out applications and look for jobs and do checkbooks and whatnot. So those are some really important things.
Thanks. And Amy?
Yeah, so I think funding is a huge one. You know, currently, the budget that the governor and the legislature is proposing is 9.9 billion, which is not enough for us to maintain current service levels. We need 10.3. And that is not something that the legislature and the governor are going to give us at this point, which means, you know, yes, we need to improve teacher retention. We need to improve teacher pay. We know these are master's-trained professionals, and we are not paying them the way we should be paying master's-trained professionals. And sadly, that's not going to come from our state government. That's a conversation we're going to have to have at the local level, whether our local voters are willing to pay for high-quality education, because that's ultimately what the question's going to have to become. And I certainly support public education and think that this is a conversation we need to move forward with and hopefully something the voters can support. When it comes to behaviors in the classroom, that is the other huge issue we are facing. You know, our classrooms are chaotic, and this is not unique to Ben Lepine. Anyone who tries to say this is this board's policies or this town's problem, this is happening all over the country, and it's even happening internationally. Australia has published a few articles about this issue in their schools as well. And so having that consistency and clear voice and people who are willing to think maybe non-traditionally, because it's not just about what's happening in our schools, there's definitely a component of what's happening in our homes as well that we need to address.
Thank you. I want to drill down on that point that a few of you have brought up about teacher pay and staff pay. As many of you probably know, Bend is one of the most unaffordable communities in Oregon right now. So given that in mind, what ideas do you have for improving teacher pay? Do you support increasing teacher pay, teacher benefits? And if so, by what means do you suggest or how much so, I guess? For first one will be Sherry.
Okay, well, I'm not very familiar with the budget currently because I'm not on the school board. But that would be, it sounds to me like negotiations with the unions. And I'm hearing that perhaps the school board may propose a levy. And so there's that.
Okay, Amy?
Yeah, so when you look at our budget, you know, 85% of our budget is people. We don't really have a lot of flexibility there in terms of increasing salaries without doing staff reductions with the current budget as we have it. In order for us to improve teacher pay, it would mean there has to be more money. So more money would mean either more taxes or the state increasing funding in education. One of the other candidates had posted kind of an unfair comparison about pay in other states. And it's worth noting that Oregon does not fund education the way we should. For example, Washington State funds each pupil at about $11,500 a year, and Oregon is about $9,500. So if you live in Seattle, you're going to make more as a teacher, but that's because the state is funding education in a better way than we are here. In order for us to increase teacher pay, we need money. The only way that money is going to come without an act of the governor and the state legislature is through a local levy, unless we're going to increase class sizes and have fewer staff in schools, which is certainly not what I think most teachers want and not what our city wants and not what, it's not good for kids. We know we need lower class sizes. So yeah, I mean, there's really not a way to increase teacher pay if we don't have the money. And you also have to think of things like PERS continues to go up, which is more money taken out of our budget.
Thank you. Cameron?
Yes, I, this is such a hard topic, and there's no easy solution. And I absolutely, as an educator, I absolutely empathize with teachers today facing what it's like to live here in Central Oregon. It is unbelievably expensive and unaffordable for most people who work in teaching and other service industry jobs. And I also agree that cutting teachers or support staff is not an option, right? So getting creative, looking at further partnerships with regard to affordable housing, with regard to other resources on how to support our teachers in different ways, because it's not going to be simply finding funds all of a sudden. We just saw Portland Public just had to cut 80 positions. And that is not a way of supporting our teachers when it comes to class size and behavioral issues and dysregulation in students either. So I am absolutely open to further collaboration with leaders in the community and getting creative on other options on how to address this issue. But I think it is a very challenging topic.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, budget, there's no flexibility, unfortunately, and a lot of industries are being hit with it. And education is, you know, spot-on with the same thing. There's no easy solution, but I do think we need to find ways to get the money and have the high-quality benefits to bring in great teachers. You know, Oregon's just, you know, on the bottom list as far as school rating, and it's, something needs to change. So we have to come together and find creative ways to bring in the money, and whether it's taxes, levies, affordable housing, I think it's something that's just customary because we're not going to get the high-quality teachers that are, you know, master-graduated and have those, you know, not incentives, but those ideologies that have been passed down onto them so that, you know, we can educate our youth. So something needs to be done. It's hard. I'm not quite sure what the correct answer is, but I know something needs to be done for sure.
Thank you. If you're elected to the school board, what's one specific change you would like to enact? If you could like wave a magic wand, I know there's more politics to that, but what's one change that you would like to enact on the board? First person will be Cameron.
That's an interesting question, and for the most part, I feel like Ben Lepine Schools, the district is running quite well. And so I don't feel like there's some massively glaring problem that, oh, I need to use my magic wand and fix that. I think a lot of things are good, but there is room for making them great. And so just a couple areas come to mind immediately for is addressing school safety. We saw this with regard to post the, after the Safeway shooting last early fall and then the lockdown at Bent High in February. And so addressing safety concerns and with further clarification for students, families, and educators. And there are a lot of different ways to do that. I won't go into detail, but also connected to that. So it really, it's hard for me to stop at one, but increase mental health awareness, that we have some great resources available, but we're lacking in awareness and accessibility for our students and our educators to access supports and families as well regarding mental health. And then also another thing that immediately comes to mind is the bias incentive reporting system that was rolled out last year and which I fully support, but I think I would revisit that with further examination so we get greater clarification and that it does what it's supposed to do, help our kids.
Thank you. Chris?
This is a hard one. It's a magic wand would just mean everything would be good, but that's never going to happen. There is room for growth. One of the things that I'm kind of on board, kind of against is the 50%, you know, automatic grading and then the new grading scale, one to four. I don't necessarily agree with it completely. What I disagree with especially is the communication that was rolled out to the parents, to the students, to the teachers. I've talked to a lot of people, and they're all stressed on it. They don't know, you know, what's this grade? What's it for? You know, how is it helping? Me going through it and on my education journey, I get it, you know, the one to four is kind of mastery skills, and you get positive feedback, but again, it wasn't rolled out properly. So the communication, I think, obviously, wave that magic wand and make sure, you know, parents are happy with the communication. It brings in more engagement, and I, you know, I think that's vital. And I think with especially specifically that change and just kind of changes in general, that communication is lacking. And I think just getting back to kind of the basics and making sure everyone's involved, because it is a team, you know, team here, and we all have to work together to make sure our students are prepared for the future.
Thank you. Sherry?
Yeah, there's, there's a bit. So I think one of the very first things that I would do would be able to open up communications more for parents. And that would be, you know, more than 10 minutes of public testimony. I'd like to see the YouTube videos have comments on the bottom, maybe like a board of directors, social media account where the public can interact. I'd also, I really want to see the kids with a basic foundational education. And so what is taking up all that time? Why, why isn't that happening? Why is there so much chaos in the classroom? And I really do believe that goes back to policies and maybe some things that were implemented implemented very quickly, too quickly. And I have some examples, but I will run out of time. I can read one. And I'll take this right off the KESL website, which is the social emotional learning that's been integrated in this last rollout. I think it's like the second tier. And this is from the CEO herself, and it says, poorly implemented SEL will be less beneficial and actually may harm kids when contexts are ignored. And so I would really question on what the rollout looked like and go back through the policies.
Thank you. Finally, Amy?
If I were going to wave a magic wand and improve our schools, first thing I would do is make sure we have academic rigor throughout every single one of our schools. We know that when we look at our youth truth data, we hear from our students that they don't feel academically challenged. No student should leave our buildings without feeling like they've been able to obtain a rich, diverse academic foundation and background that allows them to really strive for excellence, you know? And I think, you know, part of the work that we've done with the science of reading and implementing the new curriculum should improve reading outcomes. We know that we need phonics-based reading in elementary schools, and that's work that this board has done and work that is going to be starting in our schools now. You know, magic wand, happy ideal world, I would also solve the behavior issue. If I were a fairy and could make our classrooms peaceful and perfect and stop the behavioral outbursts, that would be absolutely something I would do like that. Except we know that's not something that can be easily fixed. That is multifactorial. That is because of trauma in the home, poverty, lack of access to food, poor sleep. You know, I was just at a school and a principal told me she has a little girl who comes in every day and takes a nap under the desk because the kid has an outburst in class. You know, and I think working on that, making sure that kids are coming to school prepared to learn so that we can do academic excellence, that's what I would do.
Thank you. Nationwide, there is a movement right now to ban and restrict materials that discuss the lived experiences of LGBTQ people and people of color. Do you support this movement, these movements? If so, why? And if not, why not? First person for this will be Amy.
Absolutely, unequivocally not. Our schools are something that, they have to serve every student who walks in the doors. That includes students who come from families That includes students who come from families that are non-traditional, whether that is LGBTQ, non-dominant culture. Um people need to be able to come to our schools who practice all religions and feel safe. People need to see their experiences reflected in the curriculum. And this current movement is really about making sure that one view is seen and upheld in our schools. That harms students who have been uh traditionally marginalized. We know those students have poor outcomes. We see that in the data. And anything that, you know, anyone who thinks we need to ban books, what are you afraid of? You know, when it comes to my own children and I talk to them about books and what they're reading, when they come across something that challenges them or makes them go, huh, I need to think about this a little bit more. I think my job as a parent is to sit there and support my child and to say, hey, let's have a conversation about that. Um, you know, I think parents should have the right, if something makes them uncomfortable, to be able to say like, I'm not comfortable with my child participating in that. I don't have a problem with that, but one parent's personal beliefs should not at all inform what my children get to read. Because we have different values and our schools need to be places that respect all, all values and beliefs. And um so absolutely not.
Sherry.
Would you repeat that question, please?
Sure. So there are movements nationwide to ban and restrict uh materials that discuss the lived experiences of LGBTQ people and people of color. Do you support these movements? Yes or no? And please explain why.
Well, okay, I think uh, well, without seeing the materials, I, I've looked, it's really hard to find materials. Which is why I think it's really so important to be honest, not just transparent, but honest about what's in there. Make it easy for parents to see. So that being said, I do think there are age appropriateness for different grade levels to see different things. So without knowing the context of the books and seeing them. I would be hesitant just to lay a flat out yes or no for all ages of, you know, all different grades. I, I think things do need to be age appropriate. Working with traumatized children myself for so many years and children's mental health, there, there are some things. That young children should not see. So it would be good to know what books that we're all referring to, because I don't know.
Uh Chris.
Thank you. Yeah, we're a, we're a mod pod of people within our society. So I, I am not on board as far as like LGBTQ community, black community. Uh you know, everyone has a right to go and get a book. As far as like the sexually explicit material that's in, in our libraries. I am on board as far as that based on age wise, you know, whether or not I think uh. A child is old enough to really comprehend what's in that book. Uh is something that a parent should, you know, be aware of, that it's in the library, that uh, you know, if they have a whole list of everything that's in the library. You know, I'm on board for stuff like that, but as far as like community wise, if it's not sexually explicit, you know, I'm more than fine with it being in the library. Um but anything more than that, I do think, again, like Sherry said, it's age specific. And whether or not they can physically, you know, and mentally comprehend what's in those books.
Thank you, uh Cameron.
Would you please repeat that question again?
Sure. Uh so there are movements nationwide to ban and restrict materials that discuss both the lived experiences of queer people. Um and people of color. Um do you support movements that for these restrictions or do you not? And please explain why or why not?
Okay, uh so I, I think that this is part of the strategy of a national Republican talking point. And these are school board elections, which are nonpartisan. And I feel like this, even having this kind of going there with this sort of topic is kind of breeding the battleground for culture wars. And it's pitting parents against educators and students and it's, it's unproductive, it's divisive, it's disingenuous. Um parents absolutely have a right to inform themselves on all sorts of things. Ben Lapine Schools is incredibly transparent. You can access everything on the website. You can reach out to the district office. You can access everything on Oregon Department of Education with regard to state standards and recommendations. Um if this is about books specifically, I absolutely do not support banning any books. Um we have experts uh as librarians in our school system who have been professionally trained in library science. They are fully capable and um skilled at carefully curating library materials for our students. Based on age, grade, developmentally appropriateness. Um and I certainly trust them to make so solid decisions on, on behalf of our, our kids and to support all families. And there is no typical family uh today. And I think we get really, really dangerous terr, in dangerous territory when we even try to talk about that.
Thank you. Um kind of going off of that, but maybe a little more broader. To what extent do you believe that school boards should be uh altering or changing curriculum? What kind of voice should the school board have and how curriculum is altered? Um first one for that will be Chris.
Sorry, that's a hard one. Um alrighty. Uh so policy wise, I think that obviously comes down from um. The people who get paid the big, big bucks as far as making what's, what's out there. I don't think it's the school board's um job to necessarily change that. Um what it would do is if they aren't on board or decide to take something out would be funding. And um if, you know, state pulls that back, then, then where are we at now? Uh so I, I definitely don't think that they play a, a major role in that. Um I think the school board obviously needs to um have more of a say as far as uh how they um. What they do with those guidelines and how they go about it. So it's, it's important to take in what they do get obviously handed down and implement ways that, you know, based on who, who lives in the area. And what kind of students and, you know, what kind of engagement or strategies that can be put out there to help the teachers. Um so that's where I, I'm on the stance. I don't think um losing funding would be good for anybody in our state. Um I think more is needed, obviously. And uh if we get, you know, in the business of uh saying no to the policies that are handed down, then it's going to be removed and that won't be good.
Thank you, uh Cameron.
Would you mind repeating that question again, please?
Sure. Um to what extent should school board members be involved in determining or altering curriculum?
Well, the board's responsibility is not necessarily um I. Alter the curriculum based on certain preferences um with regard to uh parent input or educator input um per se. The goal is to connect state standards with a curriculum that is determined by the district's specialists. Curriculum specialists and highly trained educators um to connect those uh uh state standards. Um and the other piece with regard to some sort of altering might be. Um aside from just sticking with absolutely, of course, great, appropriate, factual, evidence-based curriculum. Uh is that something that comes to mind for me is, is like if, if we're, if a school ward in New York or a school district in New York. Um may not necessarily uh add something with regard to the Oregon Trail or um um Warm Springs. Or something specific to Oregon coastal um waters or something like that, that there might be some shift a little bit. Um but otherwise, I think um it's our district specialists who um connect, again, going back, connecting that curriculum. To our state standards. And um I, again, I want to just emphasize that those state standards and all the recommended curriculums are very accessible on the state board. I'm sorry, the Oregon Department of Education website.
Uh Sherry.
Yes, it's, the school board does either accept or deny curriculum, which is based off of the org, the state. The Oregon Department of Education, there's certain guidelines that curriculum has to fall under. And those guidelines are easily accessible. Um what I haven't found easily accessible is what the Ben Lapine School District is teaching. Um like there are websites, you can say, okay, eighth grade reading, this is what it is. And it goes to a website with lots of pages and lots of books, but we don't know what's being taught. So we can go to the Oregon, no, I have not been able to find it. And that has been a big uh talking point of parents that I'm hearing about. They, they don't know, so what can we do to get that to parents to make it simple to find? Um simple to see. Um anyways, that being said, in regards to curriculum, it does have to fall in with the Oregon Department of Education guidelines. And the board either approves it or denies it.
Amy.
Yeah, um as Cameron said, when we are looking at a curriculum adoption, this is generally a, you know, multi-year project. That is taken on by our uh TOSSs, Teachers on Special Assignment. These are people who are dedicated professionals, who are highly educated and who have the skill set to make decisions. And give us a good recommendation on curriculum that aligns with state standards. Um as a board, do I think that we should be discounting the work that has gone on? Sometimes for multiple years by experts to think that we know better? No, I do not think that is the role of a school board. Um as Cameron said, there may be exceptions where, you know, maybe we'll add something that is more particular or specific to our locale. Um I think that is an appropriate alteration, but I don't think that the board should be questioning the experts. Um especially if there's any sort of political overtone to it.
Thank you. Um what can the district do to support students who want a career in the trades? That it maybe isn't already doing. Uh the first person for that will be. Sherry.
I just love that. Um I, I would like um. To collaborate with communities, uh with, with our community and say maybe a welding shop. I actually had a youth in foster care who was able to intern with a veterinarian. And it was, it was great. Uh it really did a lot for that particular youth and, and some other things. So I would really work with the community and uh and try and do some trade schools. I think that, that's great.
Amy.
Currently, our uh district has thirty-five uh CTE career and technical education pathways. Um we have some pathways that allow students to come immediately out and get jobs in trades. So this work is being done within our district right now. We are actually working on expanding CTE pathways and even um working on allowing CTE pathways to count towards an honors diploma. That's one thing we've heard from some students that who are pursuing an honors diploma, that they don't take advanced CTE coursework because it doesn't count. Um, you know, when we talk about future readiness within our district, that is not just college. Not every child needs to go to college. For some, that is their pathway. For others, trade school is absolutely what they want to do. And the fact that right now our district has done the great work to offer these pathways so that we have students who can get right out of school and get good paying jobs. Is work that I'm passionate about and work that I love that the district is continuing to pursue and grow these pathways within our schools.
Thank you, Cameron.
Yeah, like Amy, I um, I just feel very positive about the pathways and the work that the district has done to this point with regard to CTE. Um and I'd, a, a few things just come to mind that I think are being expanded on our partnerships, right? With um looking at that what's next piece, particularly with students who plan on graduating and staying in central Oregon. Um whether it's with regard to um connecting with local uh workforce uh leaders uh and businesses for opportunities. And um and really, I think another element of it is with parents and educators and community members embracing the idea. That isn't, there's not one set pathway um for one, to get to graduation, but two, post-graduation. And I think that is, is a bit of a shift in, in, in thinking for a lot of us. Um and uh I, I guess I would just say also just continuing um the energy that's been put into CTE. And um recognizing that. And I think the district has been doing some great things. I've seen um a few different uh stories published on that and, and, and recognizing that. So that's, that's my thought on that.
Chris.
Thank you. Uh I'm a big fan of the uh, the Ben Lapine uh CTE pathway. Um they, they offer a lot of stuff that I, I didn't grow up with. Uh graduating in California. Um I think I took a plastics course and that was the only thing that I, that I took in high school. Um I didn't know that a plumber, you know, makes as much as they do as, you know, body shop, you can make a lot of money. And those kind of um technical jobs aren't going anywhere. Uh we're not changing society like that. Uh so I'm a big fan of them. I do think uh kind of like Cameron was saying that um and Amy for that matter. Just reaching out to the local uh community as far as uh getting partnerships and even putting it out there to the parents. I think um, you know, a lot of people in, in Ben Lapine area uh have businesses and just kind of coordinating that. And like kind of putting the word out there that uh, you know, hey, we need some new partnerships. Um I think is a great idea. Uh I'm a big fan of it. Uh college isn't for everyone. Um I push it to my daughters because I, I wanted it for them. And they kind of figured it out on, you know, just kind of living life. But uh it's important and I think our community needs more of it.
Thank you. Um, you know, sadly, their uh school shootings have become, you know, um kind of a mainstay in American life at the moment. Um we've even had a couple of false alarms here in Ben with relation, relation to that. So can you tell me what do you think the school board's role is in ensuring student safety and the safety of staff members as well? Uh first one will be Cameron.
Okay, um this is definitely a really important question. Uh and I think there's a lot happening in this area. And I'm really, I commend Ben Lapine for um Ben Lapine Schools for really focusing in on this. Uh particularly uh in response to um the February um high, Ben High School lockdown. Um and uh what immediate reaction or response to that was uh the district um expediting the door locks. For um three thousand uh classrooms um and, and um, I'm sorry, not um. The door locks uh to be able to lock from the inside um because of that incident. And then um a few other things to consider, I think, is increasing our um by our relationship building. And confidence in school resource officers and those that collaboration process. Um so students and families and educators um feel safe, not only physically, but emotionally. Um I think that's another thing that often is neglected with regard to some of these false alarms um and what we see nationally. Uh and then also, um there's a recent study that three out of four gun owners reported at least one gun is either unlocked, um loaded. Or I stored with ammunition. And so promoting more safe gun storage. Um and I think there are ways to do that in collaboration with St. Charles and other community organizations. Um and then also Alyssa's Law um uh permitting a mobile-based silent panic alarm that improves response time um, which is another element. And, and of course, um continuing with increased parent information and red flag laws.
Thank you. Chris.
Thank you. Um yeah, the tragedies that are facing our students is just overwhelming. Um knowing what to do is, is obviously the most important thing to do. It's uh, it really is heartbreaking. Um but it's important that all staff and students uh should just be well advised on the protocols in the event something does happen. Uh you know, it's the board's responsibility to have secure doors, SROs, cameras. Um partnerships with the local authorities is, is vitally important and that quick line of communication. Um I'd love to see more training on um see something wrong or report it, get an adult involved um is, you know, high priority. And that, that starts beyond our schools and just educating the public as far as like, you see something, you do need to say something just because it's uh. If you get that, you know, kind of gut feeling, but you know, most of the time you're going to be right. And when you, when something's off, like report it and just kind of get the word out there so something can be done about it. So I would definitely like uh mo, more of that information put out to the parents so they can relate to their children. And uh just, you know, don't be afraid to share when something is off.
Thank you. Sherry.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this is a big one. You know, our children are just so precious. And when they go to school, we expect them to be safe. And so I, I apply uh locks. I think that's a great first step. I, I'd like to see it, you know, I, I look at the county courthouse and our judges are very well protected. And I wonder why aren't our children, you know, these are our future. Um I, I would like to see more SRO, school resource officers, a single entry point. Cameras, I mean, there's multiple things and I realize it does all cost money. Um but when we're talking about lives and our children and trying to learn. And teachers trying to teach, so we have inside the classroom and outside the classroom, we really have to do outside the classroom as well. And, and just give our youth a peace of mind that they can walk into school and they can learn and not have to worry. Um I also think collaboration with the police department. I also think collaboration with the police departments and communication could be shored up. And I don't know what that would look like without going through some different things. But there is things that could be done more going forward. Thank you.
Amy?
So, you know, school shootings and school safety are something that as a mother I feel incredibly strong about. You know, I remember my first year at UCLA, walking in on April twentieth back to my dorm and watching Columbine happen. And that was my first experience watching a school shooting taking place. And that was not an experience that I grew up with. And the fact that we now have to have our children doing drills for gun violence in our schools, which further causes trauma, is heartbreaking and devastating to me that as a country, we can't come up with a solution to keep our kids safe in school. You know, our, our board, when we had the opportunity with Senate Bill five five four to ban guns on campus, we did. We have message about safe storage. That is incredibly important. You know, twelve kids a day die in the United States from gun violence. I think as a board, we don't necessarily have a role to play in background checks. We can advocate for these things. We can advocate for background checks. We can advocate for politicians who will limit high-capacity magazines, red flag laws. These things are all really important. You know, we are working on the locks as Cameron has mentioned. But I think mental health is a huge piece of it. Not that, you know, when I talk about mental health, there was a study that seventy-eight percent of school shooters sought attention for suicidal ideation. And ultimately, when we're seeing mass shootings, it is a form of suicide. And I think working on that as a school board and a district is something we can do.
Thank you. We're going to have a closing statements now. And just a reminder, you'll all have two minutes for that, for that final closing statement. So firstly, we'll have Amy up for that.
I'm running for reelection because I believe that our schools are foundational to our democracy. Four years ago, when I ran, it was to bring my healthcare background to our schools. Living through the pandemic as a board member, that was very important knowledge that helped keep our kids safe and helped us open our schools. We were the first large district to open in the state. When it comes to the work that still needs to be done, I'm here for it. I'm here to help address the behaviors. I'm here to support our educators. I'm here to improve academic outcomes for our kids. When we talk about what our children need, our children need to feel safe in school. They need to know they come every day and that they are seen and they are loved by the people that they encounter in those buildings. We need to provide a basic education, foundational skills in elementary school so that our children can move on to excellence. I don't want our kids leaving with basic education. I want our kids leaving with an excellent education so they are ready to go forward in this world and make change. Our youth are the future. This is why people are involved in education. Our educators who show up every day, show up because they believe in the future and that these children are our future. That is why I do this work. And I hope that the community knows that I am not a culture warrior. I am here because I believe in freedom in our schools. We should have, our teachers need the freedom to teach. Our students need the freedom to play and the freedom to learn. And under my leadership, that will be what I continue to bring. I will continue to lead with an open mind and an open heart. I will change my opinion when the evidence says that I should. And I will work on continuing to improve outcomes for every student and every family who gives us their trust. And I hope I have earned their votes because I believe deeply in this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry?
Well, I just want to thank everybody even for the opportunity to be here. And I want to say that while going through this, if I am elected, I will do everything that I can to make sure that our children do have a good, solid, basic educational foundation. I will also always remember who the school board represents, which is the parents, voters, taxpayers, business members, and the community as a whole. These children are going to go through school and graduate and be in our community. I will also, my promise to parents is that I will keep parental rights in the forefront of any policy being created. That is a promise. And that's my closing statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. I'm not your typical candidate for the position, there's no doubt. I'll bring a different look to the school board and I believe it is much needed. I'm young, but I've done and experienced a tremendous amount in my life. Switching, you know, careers to education, you might ask why. I feel that empowering and enriching our youth is the backbone of a successful nation and small community for that matter. My roots are here in Oregon now. And the driving force as far as me making the decision to run, albeit late, is my niece, who's almost four, and again, starting her journey toward school. I want her to be prepared for the future, have all the advantages that my kids did not have. I've been going to school, raising my girls and going back to school for a long time. I've seen what works and what does not. One of my daughters has an auditory processing disorder. School was not easy for her. She was passed along. She had a, you know, IEP five oh four plan. She graduated. She had all the accommodations to make it work, but the system failed her in being adequately prepared for college. She wasn't ready. So we had to take a step back, figured out a different platform for her. And now she's graduated and flourishing. More now than ever, there's a shift in ideologies that are being presented to our youth and is causing a divide and frustration for parents, students, teachers for that matter. Parents are our first teachers and should have a choice of what and how their students are learning. Objectives, targets, they need to be adequately communicated and make it easy for them. Because when it's hard, parents aren't going to look. Our district needs a change. There's no debate on this. Our scores and literacy are just not up to par. We need to remove the politics and get back to the curriculum that is going to prepare our students for the future. And I believe that my experience and positive influence will play an integral part as far as the greater district and helping to enhance student growth for all.
And finally, Cameron?
First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Dishes County and City Club of Central Oregon for partnering, partnering to make this opportunity possible. This experience has been valuable and definitely thought provoking. I want to be clear that I take the responsibilities of being a board member very seriously. And I understand the dedication, time and clear communication required to be a member of the board. If elected, I will uphold my responsibilities. I will work diligently, sorry, diligently to be prepared, engaged and respectful of all viewpoints. I will act with ethical integrity, always keeping the best interest of all Ben Lepine School students and our community at the forefront of my thinking and decision-making. Given my extensive professional experience, my solid educational background and strong commitment to my Central Oregon community, I am a highly qualified candidate for the school board. As a longtime teacher, community volunteer and a parent of two Ben Lepine School students, I bring a unique perspective. Thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah, thank you to the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. And thank you to the League of Women Voters of Dishes County and the City Club of Central Oregon for putting on this forum for you and everyone at home. Just a reminder for people, your vote, your vote is your voice. Make sure to get your ballots in by May sixteenth so your voice can be heard. The next one of these forums will be tomorrow, Thursday, April twenty-seventh, and we'll be talking to candidates in the school board zones six and seven. It will be live streamed at six PM. Please visit the City Club of Central Oregon's website to submit questions up to forty-eight hours prior for each of the candidate forums. And forums, these forums can be streamed on the City Club of Central Oregon's YouTube channel. And recording links to the forums will be available at both the League of Women, League of Women Voters of Dishes County and the City Club of Central Oregon's websites. Once again, I am Joni Oddinland from OPB. Thank you so much for watching and please go vote.